To learn more about sponsorship on WCRB, visit wgbh.org/sponsorship.
Your home for great music is 99.5 WCRB, WCRB HD1 Lowell, Boston. We're also on WGBH HD2 Boston, WCAI HD2 Woods Hole, Martha's Vineyard, WJMF, WJMF HD1 Smithfield, Providence, a service of Bryant University, The Character of Success, and online at classicalwcrb.org.
It is one minute before seven o'clock. I'm Lindsay Maynard, and it's just about 57 degrees here in Boston. Rain will continue overnight with lows dropping into the low 50s. And for tomorrow, Thursday, cloudy with occasional rain, mostly in the morning. Highs will be in the low 60s tomorrow. Are you a fan of the rain? Is it kind of a nice retreat from the hot sun? Or are you kind of depressed with the rain? People go either way. But I'm kind of a fan these past few days. It's been kind of nice. And it's especially being in here in the studio. It's nice to kind of just relax and enjoy music, and I hope you are feeling the same way. A reminder that you can also stream us at classicalwcrb.org. This is music of high...
Just don't want to get accused of violating the open...
I know, seven o'clock, right?
Yeah, not for 15 seconds. Okay, everybody, thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00. And with the board's permission, I'd like to make a minor adjustment to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
And under new business, we have a donation, and I'd like to move that up to the front, if you guys don't mind.
Excellent.
Okay. So Jim, would you like to come up?
I think I'm going to talk.
You're going to talk?
Yeah. We are so grateful to have today in our audience Mr. James Leveque, who's here with his daughter Abigail and son Daniel. And they're here because they are the family of Bob Meek Leveque. And you know that Bob passed away last year, and we dearly miss him. And he was such an advocate for our schools and our students and in the community. And last year, we were talking about a special program down at the primary school through the student council and the buddy bench that they had created, an area for children to be able to go to, to find a friend and to get support when they needed it. And it was a special area. But the bench that we were using was kind of a bench that I think we had found somewhere, and the students had painted it and decorated it. And after Jim saw that particular presentation that where we talked about that and some of the postings that we had done on our Facebook page, he contacted us and said, you know, I think that there could be no better testimony to the work that Bob did and what he was about and how he was always working to bring people together in friendship and being empathetic and understanding to others and reaching out instead of pushing away. And I certainly, when Jim reached out to us and started talking about that, I knew that it was something that we wanted to help continue to support him in. And so Mr. Londa was able to find some products that would be able to be purchased and installed in our playground at the primary school and have a special sign actually embedded within the painting and everything is the opportunity to have the lettering buddy bench. And so with this donation, which I'm approving, I'm recommending that the committee approve, we will move forward with purchasing the bench, installing it at the primary school, and then putting a plaque on it in Bob's memory. So that particular donation is over $1,000 in order to have that bench there and have it be of a quality that is durable and will be long-lasting and serve so many children in our community. So I'd recommend that we accept this donation with appreciation and gratitude in memory of Bob.
And I'd like to make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. I don't think there's a better memorial that we could put up to Bob. So thank you. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as I said, we'll move forward with the purchasing and installation, and then there will be a special dedication, and we'll make sure that that gets announced and communicated out to the community when that is to occur. So thank you again, Jim, for being here, Abby and Daniel, and we really appreciate you coming by and for this donation again. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to minutes. We had minutes from September 3rd and September 17th. Does anybody have any feedback on those minutes? Okay, and we'll approve those minutes. There are warrants on the table. If you have questions, feel free to ask. And I believe, do we have line item transfers, Ms. Collins?
We do have three line item transfers that we've talked about, and I have the paperwork here for them. You can see that we are transferring the amount needed for salaries for both a transition teacher, a special educator, and a social worker for our transitions program, which we've started at Lunenburg High School. And I think we've talked in the past about this program being available for students both with and without disabilities, but in particular for students who are transitioning from either being out of the district in hospitalizations or other kinds of settings and returning to us. And we want to make that return and that transition back into the full high school, a very positive one for the students. And with these two positions being there and that program being constructed or available for the students, we feel that we have the opportunity to do that. This is being funded through some money that had been previously put towards tuitions. Actually, it was tuitions for high school students who have subsequently now been able to be placed in this program to receive these services. And so that out-of-district placement was no longer necessary. So what we're doing is taking those funds that were previously committed for out-of-district tuitions and moving them to salary lines in order to make sure that this program continues to be available for students at the high school. And we currently are serving more than two students in that program. I just also wanted to add. And then also, we wanted to, in order to support this program, the majority of the materials are the materials, the books, et cetera, that are used in the classrooms across Lunenburg High School. But there are some programs that we would like to purchase, and at this time, we're requesting transferring $1,142 into the instructional materials line in order to purchase those, once again, coming out of the tuition line. So those are the three transfers which we're recommending for approval.
Okay. Thank you. And superintendent's report, Ms. Collins?
Yes. I just wanted to remind everyone, particularly our parents and guardians out there, that the portal is operational for going into Office Pro and completing any forms that were required in terms of this year, like verifications of review of the handbook, as well as if you're wanting to withhold any of the directory information on your students. All the forms that are typically those beginning-of-year forms were posted up there. We held them back. We did not do the usual thing where we copy all of these pages and send them home, and then parents end up filling these all out and writing things over and over and over again on each form. Because we were able to move to the system, it's called, it's an Office Pro application that allows parents to do that online, and then the secretaries in each one of the buildings are able to import into the student information base the information that is updated by the parents. If phone numbers have changed, or if emergency contacts are changed, or if there are custody changes that the school needs to be aware of in terms of any kinds of changes in custody. All of those things are available now 24/7 through the parent portal, which I know all parents have access to and have received their information. We did send home a hard copy of the directions on how to access that. And if there's any questions, encourage parents to call us. So that, I just wanted to once again announce that that is operational. It's fully operational, and we're here to help, and we hope many parents will continue to go on. We're only hitting about 10% of the parents that have gone on at this point in time. That was prior to the release of the hard copy, and so we anticipate that that will grow. But we ask all of you to encourage your friends and neighbors who have children in the schools to take advantage of that opportunity, to have that very easily accessible and very efficient application at your fingertips at any time of day. I also, we're all very excited. I am sorry that Ms. Holman wasn't able to be with us tonight, because I know there's a lot of things going on at the high school with homecoming coming up on October 18th, and then, of course, our dedication. I'm rushing things a little bit. The groundbreaking ceremony of the new middle school high school will be held at 1:15 on October 18th, and that will be on the site there where the construction is going on. Mr. Spatafino, Mr. Mackin, and Mr. Santri, and I had the opportunity to actually walk around the site. It's the first time we've actually been out on the property during site enabling. There was a lot going on. There's still a lot going on, but we're starting to see the foundations getting set so they can be poured and rebar, and it's very exciting. So this groundbreaking will take place right there by the construction trailers, and you access the site off of the parking lot between the Thomas C. Passios building and Lunenburg High School. And we hope a lot of members of the community will come out for this very special groundbreaking and come out for the parade at noon. It kicks off from Turkey Hill Middle School at noon, and you know, there's nothing quite like a Lunenburg High School homecoming parade, because it's a tradition that has been here for many years, and it continues in grand fashion, and I think is pretty unique for the region as well as the state. And we're certainly excited to see how the floats go this year and look forward to the, I think the football team is having their senior parent night at 2:00, and then 2:30 is the game. And the field hockey, as well as the soccer teams, will be playing also during homecoming week. So that's all posted at our website, so please come out. And this month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I know all our athletic teams are raising awareness and wearing pink during one or more of their games this month, and also collecting donations for various kinds of causes. So please come out and enjoy watching our students play and be engaged in healthy intercollegiate competition, and also help out and raise awareness for breast cancer. So I think that those were the main things that we wanted to talk about. Be sure to keep up to date with what's going on by visiting our website. And I know that the principals, through the newsletters, as well as our superintendent updates, we try to provide that information to keep everybody in the know. So that's my superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mr. Mackin, a school building report?
The project continues on time. What we've been seeing is the beginnings of the pourings of the foundation for what we call the A Wing, which is the high school wing. And they will proceed around as each of those sections gets done. So there'll be the excavating and then the pouring, the installation of the forms, the rebar, and then the pouring of the concrete. And that will continue pretty much through November. Additionally, you know, there's been a lot of utility prep work done. They've laid, you know, the necessary conduit and underground access for electric sewer is begun. The gas line will be completed over the Columbus Day weekend. We expect this week that the irrigation system will be installed in the practice field out front. The provider of the sod for that has been put on notice, so they have apparently a two-day turnaround to deliver it. You don't apparently cut the main sod until it's ready to be delivered. So the provider in Maine is on notice that within the next couple of weeks, we'll be looking to order and install the sod. And so that should be finished, you know, at the very latest, by the end of October. You'll see what will be the completed practice field out front. And of course, you know, we know that it'll take, you know, a year to make sure that it's taken properly. So again, our goal is to make sure that it's available next September for users of practice field to take a little of the pressure off of, you know, the need for, you know, busing our teams around, you know, to get their games and their practices in. I think that about covers it. As Superintendent Collins said, we had a really interesting walk-around today with the field rep on-site. And I must say, it's very exciting to stand on the site and look around, because when you're there, you see how what the beginning of what the campus is going to be transformed into, I believe will be quite beautiful, the setting. I noted that where we stood on the grounds, it was the first time I saw the clock tower from Town Hall from a distance. And so it's going to be quite a beautiful campus.
Thank you. Okay, old business. We have a couple of policies for our second reading, their fingerprinting, and bullying and harassment. Have we had any comments?
We haven't received any comments from the public yet, Dr. Berthium, but we'll continue to put out that notice and make that available for people to comment.
Okay. Is there a motion to waive the second reading of these policies? Okay, a second? Okay, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we waive the second reading? We're going to, as we discussed at our last meeting, we are planning to appoint a calendar advisory committee, and so we'll be doing that tonight. We have a list here somewhere of who the people will be.
I have it up there.
Okay, so we had requested, let's see, what did we request? Two members of the school committee, one member, one parent from each of the, from the primary school, one from the middle school, one student from the high school, and two parents at large. Is that, did I miss something?
One volunteer for the school.
Also another, okay. And so the volunteers that we have right now, people who are interested in serving on this committee are Amanda Waltz as an at-large participant, Brandon Kibbe as a primary school representative, Louis Betancourt at large, Dr. Gary Asher would be the representative from our wellness committee, Amy Powers for Turkey Hill, Katie McGuire from LHS, and we're still looking for a student. Is that still true?
Is that right?
I believe I have at least two kids interested.
Okay. Okay. And the charge for the committee was defined last time. The goal, just to remind everybody what the goal is, is to explore opportunities for alternative yearly calendar structures, looking at questions of whether we should continue to start school before Labor Day in the fall, whether we should start after Labor Day, should we have a single March break as opposed to an April and February break or not, and also to explore changing the start times of our different schools to accommodate recent research into the obvious fact that high school students seem to be asleep at 7:00 in the morning, no matter what you do. So that committee will, should we appoint these people, we'll go off and look at that. The first deliverable is a recommended calendar by our first meeting in December. The second deliverable would be a recommended start time by the first meeting in March, I believe. So does anybody want to make a motion to appoint these volunteers to our advisory committee?
Yeah, I make a motion that we appoint them as a slate in total.
Dr. Berthium, just for clarification, if we have two students, I know the last advisory, there were two students, and if one couldn't make it, the other one possibly could. So that seemed to work out well.
Do an alternate situation?
To do an alternate, if there's two interested. I just don't have those names, and I didn't know, since it'll be another month before the committee, well, two weeks before, if we might go ahead and get those names and include them on the slate, or...
So do you know the name? I mean, we can just...
Yeah.
Ron Hyatt, Ashley Wheeler.
Okay. So would you, do you mind modifying your motion to accept them as...
I accept the student representatives? Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I assume you recommend approving this?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. And so we'll look forward to getting the feedback from parents and everyone. Those meetings will be posted. There'll be public meetings. I hope that you guys will consider having public forums to get as much of the community input as you possibly can before making a recommendation to the school committee later on this year. So it's going to be a lot of work in the next few months. The school, yeah, I think I mentioned who our members are. So now we're up to the capital plan for FY16, which we began the discussion of last time. Mr. Londa, would you like to join us?
Good evening. So what we have is an update on a few of the items that were, was previously presented. The first one, and I'll go through the five that we have, was the asbestos abatement. I have looked at this one, and I know this is a relatively large, large number for asbestos abatement, is $232,385 split for two full years. This is almost a $700,000 project to remove the ceilings in the middle school, abate all of the asbestos that sprayed on the walls above the ceilings in both the central hallway on the first floor, in all of the classrooms on the first floor, on the hallway on the second floor. So the bulk of the cost associated is all really is with the asbestos removal. However, there is the cost associated with replacing the ceilings. The feeling is that the ceilings, because the spray-on is up there, have been contaminated and therefore have to come down. The ceilings, you know, are 45 years old, and they are 12-inch by 12-inch tiled, but they're very, very brittle. They will not be able to be reused. In fact, they're so brittle that if we have a ceiling that needs to be opened up, we really can't reuse the existing tiles. They just crumble. So I looked, so I looked at, you know, what makes sense as far as trying to scope this project in a different fashion. The 232,000 is really what's needed to just to finish the first floor in the building. And there's some reasons why I think that we need to be at that level, and they have to do with really with a wide variety of things that need to happen, I think, by the end of the summer of 2016. You know, so I kind of see that we need to get through the first, the entire first floor in this coming summer. And that's to be able to allow for us to do things like to relocate the district headquarters out of the Passios. You know, we're going to need to be able to get above the ceilings to do things like running cabling in the following summer. So like I said, we're looking at a number of classrooms, room 109, room 110, room 112. But there are a lot of classrooms on that first floor, and like I said, this involves every single one of them. So we could scope it smaller, but that will increase its cost to do that, I think. So my recommendation is that we fund the entire first floor, and when we go in to do it, we do the entire first floor. The second piece, or that was in discussion about this, was to look at, you know, whether we can use the contractors that would be doing demolition on the high school. And I think that puts you, once again, waiting until summer or fall of 2016, probably the fall of 2016, which one, which you then say that, once again, that we probably would still have to maintain the district headquarters in the Passios. So that, I think, is the piece I look at and say, okay, you know, how important is it that we get out of the Passios? I think it's, you know, it's probably on the order of about $100,000 to stay there for another year, which could, so if you're out of there, you could use that for asbestos remediation. So I said, I look at it, and I think the scoping is right from the perspective of how do we keep our costs as low as possible. We have, I said, a real challenge in the summer of 2016. You think of all the things that have to happen in that summer. If I don't get some of these things rolling in 2015, the summer of 2015, I think we'll be hard-pressed to do all of those things in 2016. So I said, it's multiple things for the district. We know we're going to have, you know, the middle school, high school project on the verge of taking down the high school, taking down the storage barn for the grounds equipment. We will be trying to relocate the third grade out of the primary school. We will be dealing with trying to empty out the high school in perpet, for demolition. And we have the headquarters, district headquarters in the Passios that we are trying to move out at the same time. A lot of things to have happened in one summer with what I would say is a rather small staff to do all that in. But these are the kind of resources that we need to be able to try to do that. And if we don't think that's possible, we may have to relook at the decision about the district being moved in 2016, but they'll come with a cost.
So you already have some funding that was appropriated last...
Yeah, so we have $138,000, which was, which from the estimates we had done previous should have been enough when we actually bid the project, which was, we bid the project in April, and pricing came back in May at $175,000. And that was going to be for just the first full hallway, no, one classroom, and two stairwells. The stairwell's the second floor. And, you know, and so you look at that, and it's, okay, well, it'd make a dent, you know, it's a big dent, but you'd still be back into being in and on the first floor and really not being able to access any of it in the summer of 2016 if we just did that level of work. So I think, except to keep all this...
My question is, can you target that funding differently? Instead of the package that you went out and bid, can you focus it on getting the asbestos abated that you need to get abated in order to move the district offices? And then we can deal with the rest of the asbestos potentially in concert with the large buy of removal...
Yeah, I almost don't think so, because, I mean, you're trying to be in the space that we're abating. So I, you know, I'm excited to look at it.
So you have the dollars now, right? So we're, and we're using the space.
Yeah.
So you could abate it next summer when we're not using the space.
That's, that would be what I would suggest, is we go in and take out the entire first floor.
I'm suggesting that we don't do that. I'm suggesting you think about what you can abate with the money you have so that we can potentially, I think, looking at combining the abatement into a single large purchase with the high school abatement, because we have to abate all that asbestos anyway. It seems to me we might get a better price.
You know, I don't, I would, I would tell you, I disagree. I don't think that's realistic.
Okay, for what reason?
You know, because while you have a contractor who's doing a lot of work, he's not doing any ceiling replacement, we need, you know, a complete project. And so we need the ceiling contractor to work closely with the asbestos... And so we need the ceiling contractor to work closely with the asbestos abatement contractor. And so that's how, and that's how we've packaged it, because as I said, we really don't want to tear all the ceilings down, and then, and then, oh, well, we don't have a ceiling contractor that's committed to, to finish this project tied in on a time schedule. Not, not that you couldn't do it that way, because you could, but you might find that, oh, we're starting school with no ceilings in place, because...
Sure.
So I said, I think from the perspective of, yes, why there'd be a big asbestos project associated with the building project, I think it comes too late.
So the problem is where, you know, we have a $465,000 capital request over the next two years, that is a difficult request to make. So any means we can employ to move that out, I think, makes sense. So I think it's definitely worth exploring, think a little bit out of the box about how, what can you do with the dollars you've already got, because you have a substantial sum of...
I couldn't even finish the first floor hallway.
I'm not asking you to do the first...
Once you start the hallway, you have to do the whole hallway, you can't do like a piece of the hallway, because, you know, you'll have then something explode.
It'll be too much open, right?
Yeah, so I have to, you know, so I have to do spaces that are contiguous, so the whole hallway, you know, conceivably I could do the whole hallway, which would do, give us something, but I then can't move the district headquarters in there, because they're now in the asbestos abatement area for the next part of the project.
Right.
And then I'm moving them back out to be able to do the project, so I, you know...
Yeah, I'm already worried that you've got your dollar, you know, that, I have a different issue on the, the timing of the, the district office move.
It's, I could tell you, I, I look at this and, and realize this is a very tough thing to ask, to have done.
Right, so you, you have, most of the funding for the, the district move comes in July 1st of 2016, assuming we go with this plan and gets approved. And so that means you can't, you've only got $20,000 to start thinking about it and get ready.
Yeah.
But you're going to have to do most of that work, not even after school gets out, but after July 1st, when you can let the contracts and things like that. I think you've put yourself into a pretty tight box by not moving more of the dollars into 16 for the district relocation, so that you can get everything.
Yeah, I mean, there's things I know that we could do, because I know we could do the, the work associated with the air conditioning, with the walls and the industrial arts, and garage door with the industrial arts. But I can't really do much with, like, interior walls and phones and electrical, I don't, I don't think, because we're going to be, want to be above the ceiling for a lot of that. And once again, we haven't abated the ceiling, so...
Well, your plan right now is to abate those next summer.
Yes.
Right, which would give you the whole year to start being above the ceiling, or at least it would give you, from the time school gets out, it would give you another couple of weeks.
I think it would give...
Which, given the tight, tight...
Yeah, I think it would give me June and July of 2016 is what it would really give me, because, once again, those are working classrooms, we're, we're...
Right.
You know, it'd be, I mean, not to say you couldn't do some things, but you always can get some work done. But, you know, I can't really tear it apart, because for interior walls, because I had, we'll have to wind up getting, recreating that somewhere else in the school.
Right, so it, I would just encourage you to think about pulling some of the dollars into 16, so that you can start work on that as soon as the kids are gone, right? Instead of waiting until July, sitting around, waiting till July 1st comes around.
I mean, as I said, there's, there are things that could be done with the asbestos, but I, but except when you look at the numbers, you know, there have to be some big numbers. I mean, if I didn't do every single classroom on the first floor, that probably would be okay. I definitely want to do the hallway complete, I would want to get all the rooms that we're going to do work on, complete.
Right, so I, what I'd like to see are options, more options than the one that we've got here, which is the same option you had two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whenever our last meeting was. So it would, I'd really prefer to see an option that stretches it out over more time, instead of asking for such a large amount of money in such a tight timeframe. And you can make the argument, we'll be happy to listen to it, about what the, the delta cost, the total change in program cost is. But sometimes it makes a little, depending on what the cost delta is, it might make sense to delay some of that, just given the burden, the magnitude of that total cost.
Okay.
Okay, second was the phone system?
The phone system, so, you know, we, we've met, I met with Voice Systems, who's a statewide contract phone company. We did, we were able to tighten the numbers up to, to 22,000. I did include an info paper on that, and this shows you kind of where the costs are in line with what we did in 2001, not, not so unreasonable. But the real, I think the benefit for the replacement phone system is one obviously gives us some, you know, some ability that, should we have the phone system go down, that we're able to get parts and we will keep it up and running. Secondly, we gain some benefits from increased connectivity on the phone system, mobile devices, our, our email, and, you know, and we're looking at that, you know, also from the perspective of the Alice training and what's going to support those kinds of things. We saw a lot of benefits to that. You know, that's kind of where we are, so I think the price is, is lower, and the, you know, like I said, we tried to make the case of why we think it's important.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions?
So it looks like that's about $8,000 less than what you had...
Yes.
...estimated, and so you feel pretty confident about the 22,000?
Yes, and, you know, and there were, we, it was brought up the question about open source telephony, you know, I, we brought that up, and we kind of looked at that, and the feeling is, like I said, that we don't think that really, realistically, that we have the IT staff that are able to support it. And, you know, personally, I look at it, and I think I'd be more comfortable having a phone system that is supported by a vendor, that, you know, if we're having issues, I can pick up the phone and call them and get them out here. The, the phone systems that we have had have been reliable. We have had issues, but they've, they've been reliable of the life of the, the phone systems. And, and except, I'm not necessarily expecting that the phone system's going to break at the middle school, I just know that if it does break, and it's, it's a card or something like that, we're going to be hard-pressed to get a replacement card.
So is there any benefit to, I, I have no idea on this question, just, is, is there any benefit to doing that simultaneously with the intercom? Get any better system by replacing...
You know, I, I think the cost, you would have a, you'd have a better functioning communication system, for sure. You know, the same vendor probably would do the work in both cases.
Right.
The, the existing system that we have would allow linkage, the system we would get would allow linkage of the phone system back to the intercom system, which would give us that capability of being able to, you know, do building-wide page from multiple locations throughout the school.
Right.
It wouldn't, you know, from the perspective of the teacher, not sure it would see, that they would see a lot of change. We probably use a lot of the existing wiring, a lot of the existing switches, a lot of existing clocks, and, and speaker systems.
I was really thinking about the Alice training.
I was wondering, well, yeah, there's getting the intercom working for the Alice concept, but also I'm wondering, would there be, do you think there would be a savings? Or can you find out if there would be any savings in doing the intercom and the phones?
You know, there'd be some, but probably would not be substantial, but, and so it would be the same vendor, you'd come out one time and do both.
Okay.
And you had a, for FY17, you had a $24,000 request for the intercom.
Yeah.
Now that you have gotten a different number for the phones, do you think that the intercom would still be 24, or do you think that would...
You know, I had, I had the same vendor did give me a quote on that, it was at 22 as well.
Okay.
So if you brought it into FY16, it would be probably like 44.
So as long as we've asked you to come back with other information, can you see if there is a savings, if you were to do both of them at the same time?
I certainly can.
Because I think it does really help our, our crisis posture to do it.
To have the intercoms have been working properly.
Okay, and the ground shed, if I remember correctly, you're taking down the one we have next summer, and that's why you need one to replace.
Yeah, it would go down, it would be taken down in the summer or fall of 2016.
16, not 15.
So the, the idea was, and this is, is someone comes back to, you know, at the time the building committee was looking at, you know, the project, it was proposed maybe to put in a slab that is for this project over on the Parks Department-controlled land near where the, where the other shed is, just off the turf field. And that I don't think has been, that has been actually taken out of the plan, I'm pretty sure. I don't think we're funding that anymore. So we need a new location, so that was one of the proposed locations. We did bring that up to the Parks Department, but really haven't gotten a reply from them as to whether they had objections to that or not. The second location that we looked at is, is where the portable at the middle school sits currently, which, you know, in light of the district headquarters, with that moved into the middle school, that might be a great location for that. Not central for, from an equipment standpoint, but from a control standpoint, tractor facilities, maintenance people would all be in the same general area. So if, if maintenance people need to assist on repair of a tractor, it's already there.
So could that wait until the summer of 2016?
So the thought process was, was this, was, you know, was using Monty Tech to put in a slab, using Monty Tech students to frame it.
Yeah.
And so this was really primarily just...
Materials.
Materials, attempt doing it next school year, in the next school year.
So not in the summer, but during the school?
But, I mean, it does mean that I have to, at least if I, if to put it at the middle school, I have to kind of make arrangements for the portable to go away.
Is there anything in there?
It's currently used, not by students, but is used as storage. And we are storing some things for other people, we're storing cots and some material for the emergency shelter out there, as well as some furniture. So, I mean, that, that's a whole nother challenge to doing that, but I think it's a good location. When the school was initially designed, it was designed to have a shed there, the electrical feeds would be there already, so not a lot of good reasons to put it there, but it does mean, making arrangements to get the portable out of there.
So your thought is to have that built during the next school year by Monty Tech, so then that magic summer of 2016, when everything happens?
That one's done.
The equipment would be able to move in there before the other one gets...
Yes.
...taken down.
Okay. All right, so the headquarters relocation, I've given you my two cents, I think, I think really you've backloaded it a little bit too much, and I'm not arguing with the total dollar amount, I don't know what it should be. But by putting such a small, relatively small number in the 16 budget, you're kind of, you've got 10 weeks, and you're giving up two of them.
Yeah. In the, in the information paper on that, I did include cost at the end, and you'll, and you'll see that, you know, the total of that doesn't meet this, so this, this needs to come down to meet those numbers.
Right.
So I can relook at that.
I'll defer to you, but I would, I would not limit your flexibility in that summer any more than you need to, just given everything else that's going to happen.
So your total for the whole project is that...
51,000.
But that includes the contingency?
That includes the contingency.
Right.
Like I said, you look at it, I mean, we're not really building too much new, but...
So 20,000?
But we're trying to get some systems in place, expanded.
So 20, 50?
If you leave that 20,000, that's actually more than half of what you anticipate for the project costs, so it does allow you to move forward.
Okay, and technology?
Technology?
Hi.
So my request this year, the superintendent asked me, in consideration of costs coming forward with the new school being online, to sort of be as frugal as I could with this request, which is what I did. It's a, it's a reduction from last year's request, and I think what's on there are the absolute necessities to keep us going.
Okay.
Do you want to review those for the public?
Sure, absolutely. So we have administrative laptops for administrators in all the schools. We'd be replacing 12 laptops at approximately 900 each, that includes docking stations, monitors where they're needed, things like that. These current laptops are, some are four, some are five years old, so they're certainly at the end of life. We'd be replacing five of eight large color printers, they're all in the 10-year-old range. We've had two fail just recently, in the past few weeks, actually. So those are definitely up for replacement, they've certainly lived their, their useful life as well. And those are approximately 1,200 each. Three switches at approximately $2,000 each, switches basically allow more network connectivity in the building as we expand Wi-Fi and other network ports. We basically need more ports at the head end to serve those locations. And a replacement of backup software that was purchased, I believe, four years ago or so, five years ago or so. As we move forward in, into what's called virtualization technology, and turn our physical servers into virtual servers, the backup system required for those is somewhat different to allow for more easy restoration, more complete control of those servers and when they're being backed up. And that's a $7,200 charge with a $1,200 annual maintenance on that software. And that's all I had for this year.
Mr. Maladrenos, just to go back with the administrative laptops, the replacements, because they're four and five years old, that includes the secretaries'...
It does.
...assistance as well, so it's, it's the principal, assistant principal, and the secretaries in each one of the buildings, and then central office personnel?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions for...
What's the total?
36,200.
Thanks.
Right. Any other questions? So when, when is the date when we need to have an approved plan?
The 17th.
Okay, and we have a meeting on the 15th?
We do.
Okay, so that'll be our...
Shot.
Final shot, right?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the capital plan before we move off of it? All right, new business, we have a Unitil easement agreement.
Mr. Londa's here.
Mr. Londa, would, yeah, there you go, would you like to discuss that?
So the easement from Unitil is for the new service for the middle school, high school. And that's so that they can come in on the school grounds and work on power lines and transformers as need be. You know, the transformer for the building will be their property on, on school grounds. So that's what I'm looking for, the easement. And this is, so this is the electric, but we know that we will probably see something similar to this in the, in the coming weeks from National Grid for, for the gas service as well.
So it has Verizon on here, too, is that, is there a reason for that?
I think they're all coming out in the same, in the same cable, cable run, but duct bank, but same thing, if they have to, they work on, on it, they need it as well.
Okay. This is, you know, any agreement that says in perpetuity makes me a little nervous, but, you know, I suppose that's the way it goes. Do you guys have any questions, comments? Mrs. Collins, do you have a recommendation?
Recommend that we grant the easement, so the, the utilities can get into the new building. The, the document itself, Dr. Berthium requires a signature of, of someone who's been authorized to sign it in front of a notary, because it needs to be notarized. So my recommendation is for the committee to approve and appoint you as signatory on this, and then we'll make arrangements for that to happen.
Make a motion that we approve the easement agreement and have you be the signatory to the document.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Great, and we're up to MCAS results. We've been dying to hear these, so, it's, the district MCAS results have been released, I haven't seen them yet. How do you want to, which order would you like to go in?
We're going to start with the high school tonight, with Mr. Spatafino talking about the students' performance for eighth through 12th grade. All of the... the students' performance for eighth through twelfth grade. All of the results are posted at, at the DESE website. There's quite a bit of information that's provided there for people to be able to go. I've asked the principals tonight to basically give us an overview of those. The school committee has a workshop scheduled for next Tuesday, the seventh of October, at seven o'clock, in the Thomas C. Passios Room thirteen. And we'll be looking at all kinds of assessment data at that particular time as we move forward to goal setting. So I've asked, as I said, the principals to give an overview, because there's a lot of information with regard. I can tell the committee that all the individual student reports went home on Monday with the, with the students. So, Mr. Spatafino?
Good evening. I want to start off by thanking Superintendent Combs and the, and the school committee for all the support that you give the schools. We really appreciate all the fighting you do on our behalf. We acknowledge the budgets have been tough in recent years, but you've done a great job of advocating for our schools. I wanted to acknowledge the teachers and support staff and administrators in the district for giving our students a solid, solid educational foundation. At the high school, we reap the rewards of all the hard work they have put in, and we're very, very thankful to all of them. I'm also grateful to have the talented and caring teaching and support staff that we have at LHS. They work hard every day to give our students a high-quality education that we are very proud of. Every year, I talk about the amazing students that we have in the building, and I truly, truly mean it. They care, they're hardworking, and they're high-achieving students. Education is important to them, and that's a reflection of the parents and the entire community. That being said, I'm very proud of our MCAS scores this year. While we understand that the scores are a small measure of what our students learn and create at LHS, we do have something to celebrate tonight. So I'll start with the eighth grade scores. Eighth grade ELA scores, we were ninety-two percent advanced and proficient. That's eighteen, that's thirteen percent higher than the state average. Our math scores were sixty-seven percent advanced proficient, which is fifteen percent higher than the state average. Our science and technology scores were at thirty-eight percent, and that's four percent unfortunately lower than the, the state average. And that's going to be an area of focus for us. Teachers have already started reviewing the, the scores themselves, doing item analysis of the, the test problems that were on the test, and then reviewing the curriculum to make the, the necessary changes to improve our, our, our scores next year. Our tenth grade scores are very impressive again. Our ELA scores were at ninety-six percent advanced proficient, which is six percent higher than the state average. Our math scores were at eighty-seven percent advanced proficient, which is eight percent higher than the average. And our science and technology scores were ninety percent advanced proficient, which is nineteen percent higher than the state average. Now, looking at the, at those scores, they have a, a measure on the, on the state website called the DART, which compares schools of similar size to us, span, enrollment, and special population groups, our subgroups. And we compare very, very favorably to those schools. Our ELA and math scores were the highest of the, the schools that were listed on that, of our comparable schools. And our science scores were in the middle of the pack. As far as the accountability data goes, LHS is a high-performing school. We met or exceeded our target in all areas. We showed considerable growth in narrowing proficiency gaps in our subgroups. And some, and those subgroups are high needs. We met our target. Our low-income students were above the, the target. And our students with disabilities were above the target.
Great.
So that being said, I'm extremely proud of, of where we are, what our students have done, our teaching staff has done. And we're going to continue to, to look at the scores and see how we can improve and, and, you know, look forward to, to doing that this year.
That's great.
So any questions?
No. Thank you. Well, you've built on the shoulders of giants.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here to talk about our 2014 results from our MCAS testing, as, as well as our accountability scores from the state. So first, I'll talk about accountability, and then I'll go into a little bit of a brief overview about the MCAS. So as you know, the official MCAS scores came out late September. Turkey Hill Middle School continues to be a designated Level Two school through the state system of accountability for not meeting our gap-narrowing goals in our subgroups, as well as our aggregate scores. So overall, our cumulative PPI, which is a progress performance index score for all of our students, is a seventy-one, and our goal from the state, that the state sets for us, is a seventy-five. The state accountability system designates schools on a Level One through a Level Five system based on their ability to narrow the achievement gaps between these subgroups. So a Level One status needing the least amount of intervention from the state, and Level Five needing a total takeover from the Department of Education. So approximately eighty percent of the schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are designated a Level One or a Level Two school. And that's the least level of intervention from the state. So the state also gives us a comparison percentile rank of our schools' overall performance in relation to similar or same service of similar grade levels in schools. So Turkey Hill Middle School has a sixty-ninth percentile rank, which puts us in the top third of the schools with similar grade levels. Our annual 2000 PPI accountability scores showed improvement in two out of the four accountability areas. In our all-students group, in our students with disabilities group, we showed improvement. And we showed a decline in two areas, in our low-income subgroup and our high-needs group. Our, our goal this year was to become a Level One school, and we missed our mark. And achieving that Level One status is the responsibility of the principal, and we didn't achieve that, so that responsibility lies with me. So in reviewing the results from the spring of 2014, our goal is to have continuous improvement and to move our school forward to become a Level One school. So as we look over the data from spring 2014, we have some mixed results. Some encouraging, that show strengths, and other that show areas which we can get better and which we can improve. So talking about spring 2014, all grade levels in all tested areas in the building achieved a percentage of students scoring in the advanced and proficient range that was at or above state average. And we were unable to make that statement last year for our spring 2013 scores. In some cases, such as seventh-grade math and ELA, percentage of students scoring in the advanced category are double, or slightly under double that of state average. And in the sixth-grade math score, we had forty percent of our students scoring in the advanced category. So looking at the percentage of students scoring in the warning category for MCAS, Turkey Hill Middle School falls below the state average in all tested areas at all grade levels. So in six out of the nine tested areas for the students, the percentage is less than that half of the state average. So in review, we're at or above the average of percentage of students scoring in advanced or proficient category at all grade levels in all tested areas, and we're under the state average of percentage of students failing the MCAS in all grade levels in all tested areas. So our school improvement plan set forth goals in relation to median student growth percentiles over a two-year period to determine if we're continuing to make progress towards our goal. I updated our school improvement plan just with the data from the spring 2014 and those two-year growth scores for each tested content area. In five out of eight of those tested areas, we're seeing a median student growth score between fifty and sixty percent. And our school advisory council had set that as that we are achieving that goal in those areas. In the three other tested areas, we see student growth scores that are below fifty percent threshold, that we set that determines achieving our goal. So some of those scores lag below the benchmarks for success, but also well under below what the state definition of average student growth is. So to me, as building principal, that's concerning. So we've put some interventions into place to improve those growth scores. So in talking with the superintendent and working with some of my colleagues, we're going to be working with an outside math curriculum expert in the areas of low growth in our building to provide teachers with some strategies that will hopefully increase, increase those student growth percentiles, provide recommendations how to best support teachers and students in those areas. And then we're going to continue to foster a relationship with the junior gradebooks program that we have. It provides professional development in form of direct classes here in Lunenburg for teachers, and it has a direct consultation and observation with their expert curriculum facilitator in our classroom. We had used that as part of our results model last year in, in targeting some of our ELA scores. And the results of that is that we saw a direct improvement in student growth scores, CPI scores, MCAS scores. So it was, it was slow growth, but it was consistent growth, so we're going to continue with that intervention. And I've also been working with both principals, Brian and Jill. We're going to provide some professional development time in the area of vertical teaming, to assist with grade-level transitions, to discuss common vocabulary, to ensure that vertical alignment curriculums are, are in order. And one of my goals this year is to take a larger role in reviewing and evaluating the results of classroom common assessments and their unit assessments to assist in the analysis of student achievement. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
So I'd just like to point out, that's why we'd like to have this workshop next week, is to understand what all your assessment tools are. Besides the MCAS, it's only part of the suite of things we look at, and how you incorporate information that you get during the, the course of the school year and adapt, presumably in real time, to, to compensate for emerging trends that you might see. So I, I think it'll be a useful discussion. I'm looking forward to it.
I look forward to it, too.
Any questions, comments, feedback?
I just did want to note Mr. Santri's donation to the cause. If you see him with less hair today. This is a result of a fundraiser. Yes, our penny war is. We raised seven thousand eight, uh, seven thousand eighty-six dollars in five days. And I, we, the PTO and myself challenged our students to raise six thousand dollars, and they could dye my hair pink and shave my head in the middle of a school assembly. And they were above and beyond and came up with about eleven hundred more dollars than they needed to. So Monday, we had a nice school assembly in which the fifth grade, the highest, that brought in the most money, had the shears and shaved my head. So I'm sure the camera's picking up the pink that's on the, at the top of my head that I haven't washed.
You need a higher, higher goal next time.
I thought I was safe with six grand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Blaisdell, would you like to join us?
We're glad that Mrs. Blaisdell was able to join us tonight. Some of this upper respiratory thing, stuff that's been going around, she had a nice wrestle with. And so we welcome her back and hope she's feeling better. And thank you for being here tonight to share some good
Pleased to be here.
Some really nice results from our third grade.
We do have some good results here for third graders. As you know, we work really hard to get the third graders to realize that this is not something to fear and something to have a lot of anxiety about, that this is something that, that we have worked on preparing them for throughout their primary school years. All of the learning that they do throughout those first several years are designed to help them prepare for this first assessment, because this is their first time in doing some, this kind of high-stakes assessment. And we talk about that a lot, as far as the ongoing learning opportunities that are provided for our students every year, in learning how to read, and learning how to write, and learning how to calculate. And that all of that was ample preparation for them, so that they should just be able to do fine on the assessments. And the, and the anxiety was significantly reduced these last couple of years with the things that we did to prepare them for the assessments. They even had a first-time-ever MCAS prep rally this past year, where they produced nice little posters and inspirational posters for each other and sang an MCAS song. So that was developed by the children right there at the school. So it was a very nice little event, and they were very well-prepared for their MCAS assessment this year. In the area of English Language Arts, there were sixty-eight students, or sixty-five percent, who scored in the advanced and proficient range of functioning. Fourteen in the advanced range and fifty-four in the proficient range. Thirty students, or twenty-nine percent, were in the needs improvement range, twenty-four of which scored two-thirty or greater, which put them in the high end of the needs improvement range. Fifteen students were within three points of achieving the proficient score of those, of those numbers that I just shared with you. And then we had six percent that were in the warning range, which equals about six students. These results are similar to the previous year's results. We didn't see a dip or a, a large rise. They were pretty similar to the year before. If you remember, the year before, we were very concerned because we did see a dip. We've stayed steady in that. And certainly, this is the area that we still need to continue to do a lot of work in growth, and especially with our high-need students. In the area of math, eighty students, or seventy-eight percent of our third graders, scored in the advanced and proficient range of functioning. Thirty-nine students, which is thirty-eight percent in the advanced range of functioning, and forty-one students, or forty percent, in the proficient range of, of functioning. With ten students scoring two-thirty or greater, we had sixteen percent, I'm sorry, we had sixteen percent in the needs improvement range, and ten of those students were two-thirty or greater, just in the high end of need, and, and range of the needs improvement. And then again, another six students, or six percent, in the warning area. The MCAS scores in the advanced and proficient range of functioning, these, again, are very similar to other scores that we got last year. We had performed really well in the math area the last two years, these past two years. If you remember, that, that was like, I think, a twenty-one percent jump from the year previous to that, in 2012. So that was a significant increase in our scores in that, in the math area. What I like to focus on when we look at our students, since we don't have a student growth data that we can look at for third graders, we look at what we call the old no child left behind composite performance index, CPI. And that gives us a score of, you know, where our students who, with non-high needs perform compared to our students with high needs. Students that are considered to be in the high needs area are students with disabilities, Title I students, free and, you know, free and reduced lunch, or low-income students. Those students are in that high needs. That number represents about thirty-six students, and the non-high needs represents about sixty-eight students. So with those students, in the area of ELA, ELA, our high-need students received a CPI of seventy-three point six, where our non-high need students scored ninety-four point one. And, and the goal is, of course, a hundred. So you can see, we've got quite the gap there for our high-performing, non-high need students and our high-need students. In the area of math, there was a little bit less of a gap. Our CPI score for our non-high need students was ninety-seven, and our high-need students was seventy-seven point one. That's, you know, similar gap compared to the ELA. In fact, more of a gap compared to last year's scores. I think we were about eighty-four and ninety-seven, respectfully. So those are, again, areas that we need to focus, is, is in the area of RTI, in our tiered instruction and our targeted instruction. The third-grade staff has already started looking at the scores, especially in the area of ELA, and identified that main idea, and identifying main idea of a passage is, is an area where they need to beef up the curriculum and beef up the instruction. And have already started to look at the units and the common units that we can build into our current units to beef that up. We'll also be looking at some of those targeted students using our other common assessments as to where we can strengthen their reading skills in that area. So that's a little bit about what's happening at the primary school. I certainly could answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Jill.
And I think, Dr. Berthium, if I could, across the district, one area that we've, one action that we've taken that's in place in this current budget is
one action that we've taken that's in place in this current budget is, you know, our population of students who are English language learners went from five to 25 over the last couple of years. And we had a part-time specialist working, available to work with our teachers as well as the students. And so one of the actions that we have is we now have two full-time teachers for English language learners that serve to support the classroom teachers as well as work directly with learners. And we knew that that was an important piece as well, because we were well below the standard in terms of the direct work with those students and in terms of getting them ready to be able to access the curriculum in using English and then moving on to being prepared for assessments as well. So I'd just like to first thank our administrators for being here tonight, and also reiterate where Mr. Spatafino started, in terms of saying how proud we are of the students and the work they did on this assessment, and the work they do each day in terms of where we always find our students to be very focused and committed and working. And we work on alignment, curriculum alignment pieces, and we use these assessments as well as others to really say, where is it that we may be experiencing some misalignment with the curriculum that we need to, to get that back in in place, and use this to inform our instruction. So we keep continuously growing and improving. So we'll look forward to next Tuesday and sharing even more information with you about how that process works and some of the other measures that we use.
Okay. Thank you all. Thanks. Okay, we have a couple more donations, I believe.
We do. I wanted to acknowledge and thank the local Walmart store, who donated $450, and that is donated towards a new program that we have at the high school that is an extension of our engineering program that's in place over there. One of our master teachers, Mr. Belair, is going to be working with students and will have a robotics workshop and leading to competitions. And we're very excited about that. And utilizing that to also, we'll be offered a couple sessions of preliminary things. At the middle school, we'll also be made available through that with students from the high school, as well as Mr. Belair going down and after, offering some after-school activities. And so we're appreciative of this additional funding that will help move that program forward. We've made available a lot of the robotics equipment that we purchased for the program itself. But this is an after-school activity and an extension, so we're very excited about that. And then also, there's Targets, another check for Lunenburg High School. We've received over the last month or so, several checks from Target as part of that program that they have, where parents can just designate a school and a portion of what they're spending is then contributed back. And the high school this year received $443.94 as a result of that program. So I would like to recommend that we acknowledge these, these gifts or donations with gratitude.
So moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We're up to public comment. Is there a comment? I thought you must have a comment, Mr. Rogers.
I thought he just came to see us.
I think I was asleep. Good evening. My name is Dave Rogers, and I live at 82 Highland Street. And I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. First thing I'd like to discuss is just an observation. I'm back on the walking routine, and which takes me down Oak Avenue and also Massachusetts Avenue. So I do the loop, so-called. And the development and the progress is just unbelievable. It's fascinating. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that I got a bit choked up when I saw all of the Powell trucks and heavy equipment out there because they're, they're from Lunenburg, and I'm sure that they, they earned this, you know, opportunity by competitive bid. But I think back when our late son Jason, you know, used to hang out with the two Powell boys. And I'd be a wealthy man today if I had all of the money that Ray Powell and Dave and Karen Rogers spent for hamburgers and hot dogs and pizzas and everything. And it was, it was just great to see how successful these two young men have been. And again, I would, I'd like to thank them publicly for all the donations that they've made to this community. So I have a couple of questions, which were prompted because of articles that were in the paper. And I was going to call, but I said, you know what, let's, let's get up there. We'll get it first class. Reference was made to King's Kingdom in the local paper, and the possibilities that some things might happen with King's Kingdom. And I am going to take that this is in the infancy, if at all, but I would like to go back and just reflect on how the town of Lunenburg came together to construct the Connor Lawrence Playground, and how much it's used by folks on a regular basis. Common sense might tell you that, that it's because of the schools. Well, that's not the case at all, because the schools are not in session necessarily in the, in the, on the weekends and stuff. And it's, it's used a great deal. I think it's, it's a wonderful asset for our community and for our young people. And I was pleased to, as many were, to work on that. And, and I am here to solicit your strong intervention to make sure that nothing happens to the Connor Lawrence Playground.
So just, I'll take one second to-
Sure.
I don't believe any of us have any intention of seeing anything happen to the Connor Lawrence Memorial Playground.
I didn't, I don't even, yeah, I didn't even read whatever you were referring to in the paper.
There was a small, a little sentence in there. So that's, that's great. I wanted to nip this in the bud, or to at least come forth and to, to, you know, how these things kind of snowball, and before you know it, you're down the road and, you know. So that's great. I'm happy about that. I would like to hear from you relative to the status of the Passios building and the land.
Yep. So what would you like to know?
What's the status?
The status is, we're residing in the building. We need to reside in the building until we have a new building to move to, because we need the Passios heating plant to keep the high school warm. Right? So we definitely need to keep that facility operating. We have every intention of turning the building over to the town, and whatever is appropriate land. At our last meeting, we had a long discussion, very long discussion, about the 30 parking spots. There's a big question about whether the boundary needs to be 40 feet away from the building or not. If it is 40 feet away from the building, it does infringe on the project as currently designed and agreed to by the MSBA. So we have verified with the MSBA if we need to change anything there, that they would like to, as our partner, participate in the conversation and help us decide. So we did ask the building committee to look at moving those 30 spots, so that the total number of parking spots for the new project would remain unchanged, but we could give the 40-foot boundary to the town without infringing on the project. The response we got from that was that it would be expensive. I don't know that we have a dollar number on that.
No, we, we had a discussion today with our, our project management team about, you know, proceeding with getting some, kind of an idea of, A, what the cost of the extra services for the architect would be, and B, you know, what the ultimate cost would be, project would be. And, and, you know, then we'll be up to the school building committee to proceed with it.
Right. So my position on this is that we will give the town what they need, and what they need, not necessarily what they want. So what they tell us is, is the need. But I would encourage the town to be aware of what the implications are of the, of what they request. But I believe we'll have to vote as a committee, but my position is, the Passios building will not be needed by the district once we have the new building open and, and we disconnect the heating plant and our central offices are gone. And exactly what the boundary is, needs to be a boundary that makes sense to the reuse committee, as long as everyone understands what the implications of that are on the cost of the building project as we go forward.
Right.
And then once we turn it over to the town, it's going to be up to-
It's not our problem anymore.
Right. It's the reuse committee that's looking at what-
Right.
-will come of that.
And, and, and I probably won't say this as diplomatically as I want to say it. So you'll have to read between the lines. I, I really hope that we make correct and long-range decisions relative to the Passios area and the land, because it's my considered opinion, the way Lunenburg is growing, that there will be the possibility that we could use some extra land. Now, I, you know, I can't prove that, but just common sense tells me that this could be. And I would hate to have made a decision in the 14, 15, or 16 timeframe that comes back five, or six, or eight years from now and bites us you know where.
So Dave, I'm happy to hear you say that, but I would encourage you to talk to the Building Reuse Committee, because they're the ones who will have purview. We have committed, and we will go through with the commitment, to turn TCP over to the town. So it will be in some piece of property, as requested by the Building Reuse Committee. What they do with that building and that land will be actually up to the town meeting. And so it's, it's not something that we're going to be able to influence.
I would encourage you to go to the reuse.
I have been.
Okay.
Now, I'd like you to hold on to the tables that are in front of you, because what I'm going to tell you is this, that Dave and Karen Rogers would be happy to pay extra taxes if that will safeguard the future. Yeah, we could have it. Safeguard the future. That's how strongly I feel about this. Okay? And I think now is the time to do this and to plan properly. Okay?
Right.
And I appreciate that, the opportunity to talk to you about that. It was mentioned this evening about the relocation of the district offices. And where might the district offices be going?
Right. Do you, there is a plan, so it should be, if it's not on the website, it needs to get put on the website. So it's going to go into Turkey Hill. There's, I don't know if you're aware, right now, we have four grade levels in Turkey Hill. When we build the new building, we'll be going back to three, as it was designed to handle. And some of the space that will be freed up by that will be modified, not dramatically based on Mr. Launda's budget, to accommodate the district offices.
Orient me. First floor, cafeteria, gymnasium.
So why don't we let John come? We've got a map. I don't think it's been sent around, but.
I don't have, have that map with me, but-
I have it. I can pull it up and maybe-
So the bottom line is that if you go in the door that's next to the cafeteria, not the, not the gym side, and you go to the back of that hall where it connects with the main classroom, there's a special ed room and a teacher room back there, that, and I think a lab, a science lab.
Across the hall from that is a lab.
That will become the special education office and the, the central office. And then there's a piece of what was the, the old industrial art shop that will become-
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Right. So we need to get that out on the, on the website, so that the community can look at it.
Yep.
Sure, yeah.
Yep. Okay, great. I just wanted to orient myself and-
Yep. And just as a reminder, Brooks House is also going to the town to do with whatever they see fit. We'll, we've committed to giving that property back as well.
Right. So there's, you know, my intent is not to get in the middle of a, of a big discussion here, but, and I'm sure that you've thought about this, and it'll come out later, I'm sure. But I would hope that you've looked at the possibility of relocating back to the Brooks House, and, and not spending a lot of money and being able to, to keep that, you know, as a, as an entity. But that's, you know, as I said, I don't want to go down that road. Okay? I just, this evening, you had on your agenda, and I raised my hand, but you were going, and that's fine, number eight, second reading of policies, fingerprinting, bullying, and harassment. I just wanted to share something with you, you know, historically, when, again, when, when our children, Jason and Tori, were at school, especially Jason, they instituted a program for the, for the athletic systems, and it was a buddy program. And Jason, as he went up and became captain of the football team, as, as others did, you know, it was their job to take care of the younger kids, and to really watch out for them, and bring them along. And this buddy system transcended all of the athletic events and teams and stuff. And, you know, I'm, I'm not an educator, obviously. But I, I just don't understand why we couldn't do something similar to this with our educational system, as well as our, our athletic system, and, and make sure that, that these younger kids know that they have a big brother or a big sister, and that they're not alone. And God forbid anybody that bullies them or harasses these kids, because you'll have, you know, more than one person coming down on them and settling it. So I, I mention that just as a, as a editorial comment.
So I'd like to invite Mr. Spatafino to talk about, you know, we have some buddy programs. We have-
Lots of.
Yes. If you, if you don't mind, I'm putting you on the spot. We can, yeah.
In terms of programs that we have, we have students that are forming, I guess, groups that are going to work with some new students coming into the district. We see that as a, as a population that has a hard time getting in.
Sure.
Because we have kids with well-established roots. So we have students that want to work with, with those particular kids. We have a Big Sibs program, which is, well, these are older kids, our high school kids, going down to the middle school to work with, with students there. Our big, our Best Buddies program is working with our special needs population. We do want to start talking about, again, we have started talking about advisory programs. Our athletic teams and advisory programs are, are small groups of, of grade level students that, that, talking eight to 12 students in a classroom, working with the teacher to get to know the teacher. Teacher would get to know them on a more personal level, and the students would, would be together during their four years, or five years potentially, through high school, and really get to know each other, and, and by default, would, would form relationships that they wouldn't necessarily have, because they're connected by not necessarily athletics, they're just, just students.
Sure.
Across all curriculum and, and grade, all levels. So those are some of the types of things that we're doing. Our students, for the most part, you know, do a really nice job of sticking up for each other. We encourage it all the time in our meetings with students for, the most powerful voice is from each other, their peers, to stick up for each other and to, and if they don't feel comfortable in doing that, to coming to an adult. Is that 100% successful?
Never is.
It's not. But that's something we, we work with our students to do. And, and we, you know, we're constantly trying to move forward and having positive things. And we've seen that over, over the years. But there's always good work to be done. So I appreciate that, what you're talking about, though. We do have that in some of our athletic programs. I'd love to see that grow, because it's a great concept. So that's something we, we can, you know, look into. And I'm sure student groups would be interested in taking that on.
I'm very pleased to hear that. And thank you very much. And I hope when you, when you go to the committee on the last reading, like the, like the State House, you know, or Haley Live, and when you make that, that, that the good folks of Lunenburg should know that, you know, just what was said, because I think that this is a, a very, very important thing. I've taken too much of your time, but I've got one more thing, and you're going to like it. I would like to learn more about computers for every student that was in the paper, not here tonight. But I would like to understand the total concept, how many students were talking about, what the approximate cost would be, how do we have replacement computers, how do we have staff that fixes these computers, how do we do this, we, you know, further down the road, so it's not a big financial burden. Hopefully, it would be a sustainable kind of a thing. And as you may or may not know, I'm retired now, and Karen Rogers, my wife of 49 years, would like to get me out of the house sometime. Go figure. Okay? So this is something I would like to learn- Go figure, okay? So this is something I would like to learn more about with the idea that maybe possibly I could help and call upon some other people, possibly, to help to see if we might add something to this wish list, so-called.
So that's really great. And Ms. Combs has it on her list to come back with that plan, exactly the plan you're asking for-
Okay, that's great.
In December.
Include me, and we'll-
We'll do.
See what we can do. And I thank you again for the opportunity to come before you. And I just want to tell you my last thing. You look a hell of a lot better in person than you do on TV.
[laughing]
I'm just kidding. He's a friend of mine, ladies and gentlemen. Nice to see you.
And Dave, I really do appreciate that because I agree.
See ya.
Okay. Anybody else with public comment that'd like to follow Dave?
How do you follow that?
Oh, I never miss an opportunity to follow Dave, but I do want to just remind everyone, in addition to all the things that Mr. Spatafino, we have an articulated curriculum for social emotional development. And our teachers work every day with our students in terms of helping teach things like behavioral regulation and how to understand differences and how to embrace that and celebrate that. You know, during the initial weeks of school, some of the work that goes on, and you can see that, I was just thinking of some, a picture I took of some work that some students were doing over at Turkey Hill Middle School last week when I was in a classroom, it was Mrs. Puyott's classroom, and the students had just finished getting to know you and understand you and things that are important to me unit. And they had created a mosaic of their hands and arms that were individual expressions of themselves, but they're joining together as a classroom. So that kind of community building goes on every single day in each one of our classrooms. And we do have some crossovers from buildings as well that take place. And next, in November, the 5th of November, the Best Buddies Organization will be here, and our students that are part of that will be doing a presentation to the school committee, talking about how that program works and what good work they're doing. So there's lots to celebrate out there. Our update to the anti-bullying and harassment plans, we're in response to new mandates from the state that we want to make sure that we are also attending to, but we really feel like we have a firm foundation in terms of building on. And we just want to make sure that all of those logistical pieces, like access to a mediation system if, from, at the state level, are available and that parents know about them.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, reports. I do not have a FinCom report.
I just did want to mention that the Finance Committee Appointment Committee, of which I'm the representative from the school committee, met yesterday. That's, of course, Mr. Alonso and Mr. Murphy, Tom Moderator, and voted to appoint Carolyn Griffiths and Jay Simeon to the Finance Committee. There will still be a remaining one seat opening that will need to be filled.
Okay. So if anybody wants to join the FinCom, fill out your forms. Be great. Not you guys. Any school council reports?
Yes. The primary school had their first one last Wednesday.
Great.
And we were talking, we just made the calendar, and we got Brendan to volunteer for our calendar committee.
Oh.
Our calendar committee. And then we did talk about making goals, and one of the other things that we talked about was the lice thing that we had talked about at the PTO where we have a concerned parent in the primary school that wants to know if we can make parents more aware of when there is just one head lice in the classroom. So parents could be more diligent in checking their own children's heads before they get lice-
Okay.
-as opposed to after. It's a big concern down at the primary school.
I'm aware. And we-
Yes, we did it.
Did ask the school council to take the leadership role on that, so congratulations.
So hopefully, we'll move forward and make some parents happy.
Excellent.
Yeah. So, but that was it.
And yet maintain the confidentiality and make sure that those other policies that we talk about are held firm.
Yeah.
Any other school councils?
Turkey Hill meets next, no, the 14th, October 14th for the first one.
No high school. PTO?
Yeah, we had a PTO meeting last Monday, and Superintendent Combs was there. There was a good turnout.
There was.
Yep. So we have, we have an event coming up on October 24th. It's not gonna be the haunted house, but it's gonna be more of a costume party with Cosmic Kelly. She's gonna be there. More information, we'll go home. The PTO had a fundraiser at Cherry Hill on Saturday, and Cherry Hill was generous enough to donate 10% of everything that they made for the day, so they donated $300.
Wow.
Yep. I'm trying to think what else there was. And the PTO did help with the penny wars. And I did want to say thank you to Kim Hedlund and all the ladies at DCU for helping us pour the pennies into the machine and check out all the pennies and do all of that stuff every day last week for like two hours a day. Yes. It was a lot of work. And they were very gracious down there on John Fitch Highway.
That's great.
Yeah. So we do-
We should say thank you.
Let me look at my calendar. The next meeting for PTO is, just so I can get it in there, October 20th, in the evening. And then there's gonna be another one on the 27th during the day at the library for people who can maybe attend during the day.
Great.
Yep.
The interesting follow-up on the Cherry Hill fundraiser was that apparently it was so successful that they ran out of ice cream, and they were supposed to stay open until Sunday and closed on Saturday.
They never opened on Sunday.
They were open for like an hour on Sunday, and that was it.
I was all set to go on Sunday.
There were, people were planning it, yeah.
Not taking a chance.
No, I went on, I went early on Saturday.
I was at Girl Scout camp on Saturday and I couldn't go.
Oh, that's, a lot of you missed it because of-
We did. We didn't, somebody should have delivered Cherry Hill to Camp Greenery.
They had pumpkin ice cream again.
We could have used it.
There were folks that were buying quartz.
That's right.
Oh, well.
Yep.
All right. Policy did meet last Thursday. We had a long discussion about a couple of different policies. I think it was Thursday, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
But we didn't, we don't have anything yet to bring. We're still working and we're meeting again, though I've forgotten the date. Do you remember?
It's the 9th.
It's next Thursday.
Next Thursday, the 9th, okay. Capital planning?
Yes, we met on Monday, and we named a chair, Jamie Toali, I don't know, Toali?
Toll.
Toll, Toll is the chair, and Dennis Manoni is the vice chair. And we just set a calendar and hope to get a lot done for the deadline. And the first meeting will be the 21st, and we're having them from 5:30 to 7 o'clock before, in here on a Tuesday, before-
Selective.
Yeah, selective meetings. Yep. So it's, hopefully, people will show up and participate.
Okay. Great. Wellness advisory?
Our next meeting is October 29th at 3:45 in Turkey Hill Library.
Pac-Sal, have they met?
Not since our last meeting, right? I think I reported.
Yeah, last time.
Yeah. So the next meeting is October 10th, next Friday, at 11:00 a.m. in TCP Room 13.
Okay. And the reuse committee?
Just to reiterate what I said earlier, we've begun the process as you requested to look at if we were to put additional parking-
In the back.
-of 30 spaces in the back, you know, what would be the cost impact, what would be the impact on the project, you know, what kinds of, I mean, one of the things that came up even in discussion today was, you know, needing to coordinate that with the current drainage that's being installed so that we, you know, properly have the proper drainage for that area. So we're gonna proceed with that. The next meeting of the school building committee is next Wednesday, so we'll again have that discussion next Wednesday.
Great.
And in terms of the reuse committee, we are meeting next Monday, 6:30 Town Hall.
Super. Okay, items for future discussion. We will need to schedule a goal-setting workshop. I think maybe we'll wait and do that after we have our workshop on Tuesday and see how that goes. That might help us think about goals, unless you recommend we just start picking dates?
I think waiting, yeah.
And we have a couple of dates in November that we've already talked about. I don't remember what they are, but-
I don't.
We'll pick a date for that goal-setting workshop. Any other future items that anybody wants to make sure we don't miss? Okay, there's no need for an executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
May I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Third.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
There's a picture of the, what, the bench.